Under the consent portion, we will have some changes, but we can make those changes when we get there, which is very soon. If there's no objections, we'll move on to the public access forum. I don't know if there's any members of the public that have indicated wishing comment, although under Environmental Services, we do have some folks that are online who may be needed for certain input.
Mr. Chair, we have nobody that wanted to be on the open forum.
Arnie, thank you. All right, the consent agenda. One of the items that has been requested for removal from the consent agenda that I'm aware of is item C-13. Jody asked that that be pulled. And Terrell has some items that she requested also be pulled. Terrell, go ahead.
This one was number on the consent agenda.
Can you hear what's going on anyway?
Pardon? Sorry, number six, the consent agenda. I'm just trying to pull it up, sorry. It is the covert property, it's the solar garden. We could do that either after this or with environmental.
Okay, so it's not on the consent portion, it's in the Environmental Services section? Is that what you're talking about?
It's in the consent agenda. You might want to do it with, we can either talk about it after you do the consent agenda or wait until Environmental Services, either way is fine with me.
Okay, if it's all right with the rest of the board members, we can wait on that item until the Environmental Services portion. Are there any other items in the consent agenda that folks want to discuss prior to moving approval?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was just talking, and I'm sorry that you had to overhear me, but Commissioner Notch is having some troubles accessing, and so he's rebooting and trying to get back on, and I believe he did want to pull item number six as well, so maybe we're covered okay there, but I just wanted you to make sure you knew that he's struggling to enter the meeting.
We all have our challenges. Maybe I got the screw-up of the day, I thought we started at four. So, anyway, I was practicing and it still didn't make me any better.
Well, for what it's worth, Mr. Chair, I went and double-checked on the actual time because I thought, I don't think we're starting at four, but I better check.
So, the relative to item number six then, we'll be taking that up in the Environmental Services, is that the deal? We can approve.
Commissioner Persky, I would support taking six up in environmental. Also, I'd like to pull number five and take number five up in environmental as well. The M-Dick gravel pit.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
We're going to delay five and six and scratch number 13. If no other changes are going to be made, I'll move to approve those other items.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it, that's fine.
Thank you, Terrell. All those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four? Aye. And Steve, it looks like you're on board, you know what we're talking about? Do you want to vote? Steve, I see you, but I can't hear you. There are days when that's nice, but it isn't nice right now. Steve, we got no audio for you. Steve, can you hear us? Wave if you can hear us. I'm going to consider that a wave. Okay, are you in favor of the consent agenda with the items we changed, or do you want the changes repeated? Well, once in a while, it comes to pass that government in action is a two-word concept. I think we got one of those situations right now. So, I'm going to assume that we've approved the consent agenda with the items that we've noted, and then can we move on to Environmental Services?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I hear you, Steve. What's on your mind?
Not that I just, I had to dial in through my phone, I got the video, but I don't have audio.
Okay, well, we got the whole load now. So, do you have any objections to the issues that we've managed to confuse so far?
I don't know what you confused.
Okay, well, you're even in tougher shape than I thought. What we did is, we're ready to move the consent agenda, but we're pulling several items. For example, one of the items that we're pulling is item C-13 that Jody had brought up, and we're also pulling five and six, is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, that's correct. Terrell picked six and I pulled five.
Five and six will be moved to the Environmental Services agenda, and number 13 is not going to be taken up until your meeting on the 15th.
Okay.
Six, the solar thing?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, and we have a motion, a second for approval then with those changes. And we went through a roll call vote, the only one we have and hasn't voted yet is Steve. So, Steve, you're district five, you got the update. Do you wish to approve or disapprove?
Okay, which one did you pull? Two, five, and six?
Yep, well, 13C too, we're not going to consider that at all.
Not two, just five and six.
Five and six, and deleted 13. Oh, okay.
All right, well, motion passes. All right. Reminds me of the biblical reference of pulling a camel through the eye of a needle. That's as good as a Bible shot, because you'll get out of me today. All right, Environmental Services. Item number one is rezoning submitted by M&amp;D Investments, and I believe that we do have people on the line if we need additional information on that particular item, but if staff is available to walk us through that, take it away to Shelley. Shelley, we can't hear you. There are days when that's nice. Shelley, we still can't hear you. This is really an adventure today.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Angie Berg, I am here and available to take these items.
All righty, let's go.
Okay, would you like to take the regular items first and then consent at the end?
What would the rest of my esteemed colleagues like to do? I think Angie made a good suggestion, you want to do that? Okay, let's go.
Okay, thank you, Angie Berg, Stearns County Environmental Services. We are on item number D1, and this is to consider the Planning Commission's action on the rezoning submitted by M&amp;D Investments LLC on behalf of Robert Pier Scala for RDP Investments Limited Partnership. And if the board concurs with the Planning Commission, you would be enacting ordinance 611. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 19th, made a recommendation to approve a rezoning of approximately 40 acres from the agricultural 40 district to the industrial district. The property is located in Section 36 of St. Wendell Township. St. Wendell Township did recommend approval, as did the Planning Commission, on a five-to-one vote. As many of you know, this is a projected future home of trout companies, and if this rezoning is successful, they will be back requesting a conditional use permit in the future. And I do know, Mr. Chair, that David Myers with Ricky Newman is on the line representing trout if there are any specific questions.
Any questions by board members on this action? It sounds like we'll get two opportunities to review this. What's your pleasure? Don't know how to talk at once, I get confused.
Jeff Mergen, I'll move to approve it.
Okay, all right. Terrell? Terrell has a second? Okay. I think what we're experiencing is technology in action being a two-word concept. All those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four, aye. Steve?
Aye.
All right, a pass.
Thank you very much.
Hey, no problem. Anything, David, I can do to help you with billable hours, feel free to call me.
Always appreciated.
Next item, the Michael and Diane Omen.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can, I can take that, I don't know if Shelley's audio is working yet, so I can go ahead and take this one. We're on item D2, and this is to also consider a rezoning. This was submitted by Michael and Diane Omen of Gold Spring, and the Planning Commission on this particular rezoning, high vote, 3-3. If the board would choose to enact and approve this rezoning, you would look at enacting ordinance number 612. The Stearns County Planning Commission did hold their public hearing on this item as well on November 19th. This is to rezone approximately 10 acres from A40 to R10. The property is located in Section 31 of Main Prairie Township, and I would also like to note that Main Prairie Township did recommend approval. The Planning Commission's findings are listed in the agenda. You know, Commissioner Lenzmeyer had asked, what does the board do in a case of a split decision of the Planning Commission? And the Planning Commission ordinance indicates that in the case of a tie vote, it's the board's decision, which ultimately, it's always your decision, but what it means is that at the meeting, they don't have to keep dialoguing until somebody changes their mind. So, this item is in front of you as a 3-3 vote, you do have the opportunity to approve the request, deny the request, or hold your own public hearing.
What'd be the wishes of my esteemed colleagues?
I look back at this.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jeff, you got some background?
Well, I just looked at Main Prairie, Main Prairie approved it 3 to 0, and they did make a statement that it fits in with their comprehensive plan, so I would go along with moving for approval.
Okay, all right, well, thanks for the input. Anybody else have a comment on this?
That we have an ordinance that says a 3-3 is an approval. I have to admit, I was going to suggest that we have a public hearing because clearly the Planning Commission was pretty mixed on it, and I think, well, the township said something, they basically said they were open to it, which I thought was interesting. So, for me, I needed more information. If you all decide to move forward today, that's fine, but I have to admit, it seems to fit when you've got that kind of a split with doing a public hearing.
Okay, well, unless the motion maker in this... Pardon me?
Can I make a comment?
Well, I hope somebody says something, let's get to keep this party going.
Well, this is Steve, and I drove out there on Saturday and took a look at it, and I mean, there's this rural residential use up there, and I guess I see no problem with going ahead with it without another public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on it too, and I'm similar to Steve, having, you know, looked at it at the Planning Commission, it was a split vote. Those folks that were opposed to it were very concerned about losing the agricultural aspect of it. However, it is not prime real estate for agriculture. It's hilly, it's stony, it's wooded, but it is an ideal spot to build a house. I did ask Angie if she would at least provide us with a pic of the area. You'll see that there are many other 10-acre parcels in the area, so it is a fit, it's not spot zoning. If you want to see that, you're more than welcome to see that, otherwise, I would concur to move it, and we can move on.
Well, you can make that happen if you call the question.
Rather than call the question, you can take a look at the piece on the screen. You can see those other 10-acre parcels that are all around it, and again, it seems to be a good fit. The intent too, by the property owners, is to remain with the remaining area that is agged, have it continue to be farmed. So, those acres will remain in agriculture, and I believe the woods is going to stay as is at the present time, so.
Okay.
No change, other than putting the house in there.
All right. Does staff have any other input? We got, we've heard from everyone here on the board. Anything else we should know? If not, I'm going to ask for a vote on this, so, because we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. All those in favor say aye. District one?
This is where it would be great to have a pass, I just, I felt like after looking at it, we should have a hearing, so I'm going to say no.
All right. District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four? Aye. District five?
Aye.
All right. There is a theory out there that a split vote, 3 to 2 or 4 to 1, is a stronger vote than unanimous, because it demonstrates, should this be reviewed in the future or contested, that it was discussed, so maybe there was merit in doing it the way we did. Okay, the next item, is item number three correct? Is that where we're at? Angie? Somebody want to give us some background on the Radamacher?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Angie Berg, I was going to allow Shelley to try to jump in here, but it doesn't sound like she has audio yet, so I need to get to my, the next screen here.
Got to get your audio in gear. Just this old sicko, it's thinking that's funny. Shelley, you want to give it a try? Lips are moving, no sound.
Okay. I can, I can go ahead, Mr. Chair, and we'll take the next item. That is to consider the last rezoning, and this was submitted by John and Carolyn Radamacher of Sartell on behalf of Paul Lindendorf of St. Joe, and an act ordinance number 613. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item also on November 19th, recommending approval of a rezoning to, from approximately 10 acres from the agricultural 40 zoning district to the R10 zoning district. The property is located on County Road 4, just next to Leesack Township. The Planning Commission voted on a 4 to 2 vote to recommend approval of the rezoning. And St. Wendell Township also approved this request.
Okay, any questions from board members? And if there aren't any questions, is there a motion to approve or deny? Well, we'll be... Thank you, thank you. Didn't know, you know, with all of this COVID stuff happening, I didn't know Lockjaw was involved, but who's the second on that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll second that, Persky.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four, aye. Five, Steve?
Aye, if you can hear me?
Yep. Okay. The item number four?
Mr. Chair, can you hear me at this time? Okay, so the next item, item number...
Shelley, you're getting terrible feedback.
Okay, I will try, I want to see if that makes...
A little bit better, whatever you did.
Everybody else can mute.
Shelley, if you can call and mute.
So, we have item B4, and that is the authorization for assessment of a non-compliant sewage treatment system, and I have Mark Lateral here to present that item, if it's in specific you want to ask for. We are looking for assessment of a sewage treatment system to the taxes.
Okay, Mark?
All right, good evening, Mr. Commissioners. As Shelley said, I am here this evening to, on behalf of Daniel Geis and Michelle Holt, who reside at 26th Seventh Avenue North in Sartell. They have a sewer system that has been giving them problems for both the last few years, and actually is considered an imminent threat to public health and safety. On November 17th, Michelle reached out to me asking if the county would consider aiding in financing a new drain field for them. She had been in contact with one contractor, and, well, with the second one, that was attached, but, so I'm here this evening on their behalf, asking if the board would consider utilizing Resolution 07-32 to naturally assist in updating and upgrading their sewer system.
All right, any questions by board members? Or, if there are no questions, any suggested action by a board member?
I just have a comment.
Jeff?
A second.
Okay, this is, we have a situation here that I can best describe as that Three Stooges skit, where all three of them are trying to get through the doorway at the same time. So, who's the motion maker?
Steve, and I'll second. And I'll second.
Okay, Terrell seconded, I still don't know who made the motion.
Steve.
Thank you.
But I think Jeff had something he wanted to say.
Oh, yeah, I saw his lips moving, I was going to call on him next. Jeff, what do you got?
Well, I just, situation here where if, the only problem they're having is that the tree roots are growing through this, their tile. I know someone that had, had that issue, everything else with the system was fine, and it may save them some dollars if they went this route. This person did a, used neighborhood plumbing out of Saint Cloud, and they talked to Gary, they put in a liner, they rooted it out, and then they put in a liner so that the tree roots wouldn't go through, and it was quite a bit less expensive. So, I'm okay with approving this, putting on the taxes, but maybe they want to check that out and have less put on their taxes. It might save them a few thousand dollars. I know this person had saved about $5,000.
Okay. How is a good way to word this so that, our primary concern really is that it's fixed? So, how do we build our approval, or put our approval together in such a way that it addresses the fix, not necessarily the how-to? Is that where you're trying to get to, Jeff?
Yes, that would be my thought. I mean, if everything is fine with Environmental Services, with them going this route, I would think it would save them a few dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Angie?
Chair, Shelley Benson?
Yeah, Shelley.
One of the things that is important to remember is that we can't advocate for a specific business, so if the homeowner wants to choose to look into another option, a homeowner could do that, but we can't advocate for one particular business over any other particular business. So, at this point, we would look for the correction of the system, that's why we brought it forward as we did.
Yeah, I think the discussion, the discussion I heard was about technique, not necessarily vendor.
And it's my understanding, this is the only, there's only one outfit that does this technique, so.
Okay, well, that narrows it down then.
And they have to use a licensed vendor, correct?
And they have to use a licensed vendor, correct? So.
Correct.
So, okay, so, all right.
So. Just a suggestion.
Okay.
I think your motion is still fine. It still allows for that flexibility, so.
All right.
Great.
I was just going to ask that. Randy, you're a mind reader. That's scary. Uh, the, uh, we have a motion on the floor and, uh, had a pretty good discussion there. All those in favor say aye. District one.
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait a second.
Uh, will, will that bring it into compliance? Is there any issues with the drain field or the rest of the system? Is it just the the pipe going to the drain field or going to this, to the outside of the system? Do we?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, from my understanding, uh, per the summary that Shelley wrote in her submittal here, there, there is root intrusion in the pipes. However, after speaking with two contractors and the one is listed as farm excavating and then the other mire excavating, both, both those contractors recommended replacing the pipe work and a new drain field. So that was their solution to the issue. Um, if they did that, that would cease the surface discharge that's occurring now and make this a compliant system.
And so my, my concern would be because if we ask them to go ahead and make changes in the pipe only, that might not remedy the condition. Is that correct?
Quite possible due to the fact that if you don't take the tree away, the roots will come back.
But then it'll be a noncompliance and we can cite them, right?
Well, we didn't know this was an issue until we got the complaint about them surface discharging into the neighbor's field. So.
So if this doesn't fix it, this neighbor will complain again, right? And then we'll know.
Quite possibly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, bottom line is, bottom line is, they'll need to bring it into compliance one way or another, and that's up to them.
That's it. That's it. Yep. Steve, your, uh, Steve Notch, your audio quality is really dubious. But anyway, uh, that's for your information.
So our resolution, just so I, to clarify, our resolution is that they get this taken care of so that
Yep.
is no longer. They just need to be brought in compliance. We don't necessarily care about how, we just want to make sure it gets done and they can't afford to do what they've been told. So whether it's this way or the idea that you heard, um, they just need to go get it done.
Yeah, liners are used extensively in the city of Saint Cloud. They did my neighborhood two years ago. Uh, it's, uh, pretty interesting to watch. I hate to bore you with sewer technology, but they use a TV camera. It's pretty cool. Anyway, the, uh, we can vote on that now then? Okay, district one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three. Aye. District four, aye. Uh, Steve?
Aye.
All right. Uh, let's see. Is that due to environmental services? I guess so.
Mr. Chair, we are back to item C five.
Ah, that's right. Okay.
And that, yep, that would be the IMDIC approval for a gravel pit and Angie should be aware of it, but that is packet or, I'm looking for the packet page, packet page thirty-three. So if you, that's where it's located and Angie, ready to discuss and let's hear, I think Commissioner Persky was the one who pulled this agenda item. So Commissioner Persky, do you want to tell us what you?
Sure, uh, uh, we had passed this at the Planning Commission. Uh, and what had happened was the IMDIC gravel pit had been approved for four acres uh, last year. And, uh, it was approved for a thirty-two, uh, year, uh, dosage. Uh, then, uh, last month, we also had the Krichner property coming in for approval and they had requested a thirty-year approval. And we looked at it and, and we were looking at some of these situations where these gravel pits exist and this one was right along a creek bed. And just with the changes environmental, uh, we, we were having the discussion as the commission and we said, you know, we don't always grant thirty years. Uh, and the idea was that uh, we've got good stewards and we have stewards that aren't so good. So the good stewards that are in these environmentally sensitive areas will take good care of the land and after twenty years, we should just go ahead and then approve it again if they so desire. Rather than allow it to go thirty years and if there's some problems, then we're, we've got some environmental issues that just continue to lag on. Uh, and, and that was the consensus that more or less we should not be extending them for thirty years. Well, when the IMDIC property came through, it was increasing it from four acres to fourteen acres. But that was never brought up. And then after we had passed it, there was one dissenting vote and, and we asked the dissenting voter why he was against it. And he talked about, well, you guys said we should make these things twenty years instead of thirty years and you went ahead and approved it. So it was an oversight more or less by the commission. So my intent here would be, uh, I have no reason to believe that the IMDICS would not be good stewards. However, they're tripling the size of this, uh, uh, gravel pit. The gravel pit does lie in an environmentally sensitive area. The city of Melrose draws their water from that area and so it's in that dwisma. And so I, I guess, looking back, had that one commissioner brought that up, I would have thought that the Planning Commission would have said, yes, we should have made it twenty years instead of thirty. So I would just think that, uh, I would be okay about approving this. If we can, just change the thirty years to twenty. And that way we'll be more consistent because I think in the future, again, in the environmentally sensitive areas, we're only going to go with a twenty-year permit. I wonder, did I articulate that well enough?
So wouldn't we have to have a public hearing to do that? That's a pretty big change from what was recommended, what the Planning Commission recommended to us.
Uh, environmentally, you can answer that.
Um, Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Persky, uh, it would be our practice if we were going to change a condition that would, uh, that our, uh, landowner wouldn't be aware of, it would be in our best interest and past practice to hold a public hearing so that the landowner would be made aware of the change in the change it from thirty years to twenty years would be a significant difference for that landowner.
Okay. So what have we figured out then?
A public hearing if you would like to cha, make a change to it, uh, to that request.
All right. Does this rise to the level uh, in the opinion of my esteemed colleagues of a need for a public hearing? Like to hear some discussion on that.
Is this, I'm just, so is this, was this amending the existing permit? Or was this a new one?
Steve, this was a new one. Well, they had gone from a four acre site to a fourteen acre site. Okay, and, and again, um, when we were looking at four acres, I don't think it was considerable difference. But then again, now you're tripling the size of the gravel pit and now moving for thirty years, but we had not even discussed the terms. We just were uh, discussing the, the, the change there. It would, so to me, it was an oversight by the commission. Uh, I, I, I'll leave it up to the, uh, the board to decide what they'd like to do, but.
I would think frankly from our covering, covering ourselves, it's significant if they walked away thinking they were likely to get thirty years or a public hearing and we just changed it to twenty years. And, and it also sounds like the Planning Commission didn't necessarily get to talk, they might have totally agreed with what you're saying, Joe, but they didn't really get, that wasn't what was before them. So it would seem like to me, if you wanted to make that change or wanted us to consider that change, then we probably should be setting it up. Unless people want to vote for the thirty years.
Oh, I would like to know what Steve thinks. It's in his district.
Well, my thought is, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my thought is, are we going to address any of this mining in our uh, comprehensive plan? Or is there a reason why they go from one year to five years to thirty years to thirty-five years? Is it by a request of the applicant? Or do we have ordinance that?
Um, Mr. Chair, Mr. Notch, I can address that. This is Angie Berg in Environmental Services. So mining isn't currently on the list of, of items to talk about during the, the comprehensive plan ordinance changes, but certainly if the board would like to add that to the list, uh, we can do that. I know you and I have had conversations about certain mining requests in the past. To answer your question on the timeframes, is the, the ordinance is open-ended, so the applicant can propose one year or, you know, forty years, whatever, somewhere in between and it's up to the Planning Commission and the board to to decide if that's a reasonable request.
There is no opposition from the city of Melrose to expand its pit, was there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, there was not the, um, this is an amendment and so for the first, the first interim use, they had submitted comments and recommendations because of the dwisma. And, uh, Joel Indic did take those into consideration and we have specific conditions addressing their concerns. And so they had no new comments for this amending request.
Steve, I'll, um, uh, I think it makes sense for you to give the board some direction. What would you like to see?
Uh, you know, honestly, I, I understand, you know, Joe's point and what the, you know, the, the planning commission, you know, was thinking. Um, but honestly, that, just knowing the applicant, I really don't, wouldn't have a problem doing the thirty year.
It sounds like, uh, they're responsible operator in your opinion?
Yeah, and I'm not saying he's the one that's maybe operating the pit, he owns it.
Okay.
But but maybe he does operate it too. I, I see his name is on both sides, so it looks like he is the applicant and the owner.
Okay, well, you know more about it, I think, than any of us. Uh, what would be the appropriate action here? I know I hate this job. We got to make decisions, but that goes with the territory, Steve.
I guess I, I would move just accepting it. I mean, he did have a thirty year and I don't, I wouldn't have a problem, you know, like approving it as is. But that's, I, I'll make the motion, but if it fails, then we can do a public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right. Uh, it sounds to me like the horse is dead. So all those in favor say aye. District one.
Aye.
Two.
I'm saying nay with, uh, the comment. I think, uh, uh, we should have that discussion about, uh, the length of those permits though in, in the future.
District three. Aye. Uh, four, aye. Steve?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, it would make sense. I, I know that approvals for various land uses, uh, uh, for example, landfills. I think that the maximum you can get is a five year and then it's reviewed uh, near four, uh, for a continued use. Now, that said, there are numerous landfills that have thirty and forty year histories. I've appraised a few. So, uh, the, uh, uh, you know, that adds some merit going forward. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and those that are good stewards will take care of the land and they can continue on. That's, that, that's the whole point. So, yeah, we can have that discussion another time.
Yep. And if they're not good stewards, aren't they risking their own cash flow? Because, you know, we can do the big brother thing and come in and shut them down conceivably. Um, and we have to have good cause. Um, any other items under environmental services?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We do.
Yeah.
We do have consent item number six that was also pulled from the consented. So that would be the, um, approval of the Planning Commission action on conditional use permit submitted by CSG twenty-nine of Wayzetta on behalf of Howard and Penny Covert Eden Valley. That is a
Okay.
And, and I will let, um, Angie talk to you about that. It is on packet page fifty-six.
Okay, Angie?
Um, sure, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So this one, uh, was a five to one vote on the Planning Commission to recommend denial of the count, to the county board. Uh, Coverts did apply for and were granted a conditional use permit in May for the first one megawatt solar farm and this would be the second. I think that is cited in their, the Planning Commission's findings. So as is, as is typical of the county board's policy, if you do not concur with the Planning Commission's denial, it would be to schedule your own public hearing. Uh, and if not, you approve, if you concur with the Planning Commission, then the CUP would be denied.
Okay, uh, any discussion by board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is why I, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. Um, my understanding, I don't know how this works with these solar farms, but if, if, if they're designed for one megawatt, so now I drove by there on Sunday and it doesn't appear the first one has been built yet. I don't know if Environmental Services knows or not. At least it didn't appear to be. Um, are these two going to be interconnected?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, and I believe Chuck Beisner is on the line, the applicant could probably address your more specific concern, but in order for these one megawatt projects to fall under the the Excel Community Solar Garden program, they are owned and operated and sent to, they have different substations that they go to within the property and then from there they would, I would assume, go to the same major substation. But somebody way smarter than me would have to explain how that works. But I do know that they are owned and operated separately and permitted, uh, in this case separately. They go through the Excel process as a separate solar garden application. And you're correct, this, the solar garden, the first one has not been constructed yet.
How long are these approvals good for? That is a good question.
Mr. Chair, there, the ordinance for conditional use permits indicates that you need to start construction within a year, but we do have the option to give an extension. And extensions are typically granted. Those are administrative extensions. They are typically granted unless for some reason the ordinance would change in that timeframe, then we would hold, you know, put the pause button on and we would have to take a look to see if we, if we could still honor that or if it would need to go back under the rules.
Okay, administrative is extension. All right, uh, that's helpful.
One, one other comment to, you know, if you read some of the commentary, you know, it seems like there's a a conflict in our comprehensive plan, you know, where it's a, what do you call it, a acceptable use? You know, but then in the same breath, I think it was this one where then it, uh, it was turned down because, you know, it's for, the decent score was high and it's, you know, ag land, but yet it's a permitted use in the ag zone. I don't know, maybe Angie or Shelley can address that. Is, you know, is there, do we have kind of a conflicting point?
Uh, Angie, I can address that, Angie Berg with Environmental Services. So we're going to talk about solar on December twenty-first. You'll be getting your packet shortly on that. I would say that the comprehensive plan, uh, is, is written by design. I think that whether or not the policymakers such as the board believes solar is consistent with the clean energy policy or is it conflicting with the ag use? I, I believe that you have the discretion to make that decision and I don't think that there's a flaw in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
I was wondering also if you could talk about the land area that they're looking at, um, in terms of what the quality is in terms of agricultural purposes versus what their plan is and what the land might be like in the future since they're looking at pollinators, et cetera.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark and maybe Shelley was going to jump in too. Sorry to hop in on you, but I think, uh, member Wienerman on the Planning Commission had made some comments related to that, how in some situations you could, you could make the argument that. argument that taking from tillable and going into a solar garden would be a pollinator-friendly habitat could be similar to seeing something go into CRP. As for Coverts' plan in the future and the productivity of the land, we would need to hear from them as, as the landowner who farms it. We rely on the lease score, uh, whether or not that's always accurate, we've had that conversation in the past, too.
Looking on page seventy-three of the packet, and are those the two solar gardens, and they're right next to each other? Is that the plan right there? Am I interpreting that correct, that that is a picture of each one separately with the L shape there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I believe that's this project, not the other project, if I'm correct. Angie, you can tell me if I'm correct on that.
Yes, you are correct. I muted, no. Uh, I was just, I was gonna pull that up. I think we have a map, uh, in the packet which shows the first and the second. I'm just trying to pull that up here.
If we're looking at packet page seventy-three, you're going to see that there is a wetland area that is off to the west of the property, and then, um, so they are out of the wetland. Oftentimes when they're in agricultural land, they're going to put it in the, the less productive land. Now, that doesn't mean that their lease score, that it's less productive because the lease is done on the whole area. I think it's important that farmers will often put their other projects or solar air, uh, projects in areas that are typically less productive for their purposes so that they're able to use their most productive land, um, and keep it in, in production. And Angie is going to share your screen to, so you can see the whole thing.
Okay, picture's coming up. Is this separate ownership from the other, uh, solar garden that they're talking about? Are these different operators, different owners? What's going on here?
Hi, Mr. Chair, this is Chuck Beisner, and sorry to barge him, but yes, they would be different, completely different owners just on the same parcel of property.
Okay.
Not tied together.
All right. Is the parcel of property under single ownership, or are the two projects operated or own the projects themselves, owned by different people?
The, the underlying property is wholly owned by the Coverts and the original solar garden and this proposed one are owned by two separate entities.
Okay.
Operated separately.
All right.
Are they tied to the same substation?
They will be tied into the same major substation, yes.
I'm trying to think, I don't know enough about those, I'm trying to, trying to think if there's an operational advantage doing this, this, this way.
Well, from what, okay, this is just my, an opinion of myself, but the one-megawatt stays underneath the production tax credit, correct?
Correct.
More than one megawatt, I guess, you have to pay a production tax credit?
Actually, I believe you still have to pay a production tax credit even on one megawatt.
Randy, are you on?
I, I thought it was everything above one megawatt. But, but government revenue does look at if there's, you know, similar ownership and how far apart they are and all that, so even though it's less than one meg, they may add them together.
Yeah, because that, that's kind of my concern, and here it's kind of like, I feel there's a skirting of an issue, because then the first owner should have just said, well, we're going to do the whole two-megawatt.
As the, as the Excel policy reads now, eh, you cannot build anything over one-megawatt in size with Excel plan as it is today. Back in the day when it originally started, you could build up to five megawatts, but now you can only build up to one megawatt. And so the only advantage would be if, if garden owner A, the yellow, and then garden owner B maybe possibly hired the same contractors and built at the same time, they might have some savings for mobilization and so forth in construction. Otherwise, there is no advantage to doing two next to each other, per se. The advantage to the Coverts would be they have a thirty-eight acre parcel which take away the wetland, take away the original garden, they don't have much left there to be able to farm, and so they were going to use the rest of the land for the second megawatt. But it'd be essentially like two different ones on budding parcels, this just happens to be on the same parcel. And any solar garden probably within five miles of this area would also connect to the same substation.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure I'm going to ask this in quite the right way, and I don't know how much of this goes back to what you were asking, Steve. You know, it, what, if a casual observer was looking at it, it would look like there are one plus one equal two on a property. Has this been done in other places? What, what does that, you know, what has the outcome of that been? Or is it really considered to be like it's on two separate properties that are adjacent or something like that?
I am unsure of Stearns County, but I know we, as, I have seen this multiple times.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, I can comment on that. Uh, I think we've, the county has permitted three to four where this would be the second, where, where it would be a second megawatt on the same parcel. So this has, this has happened in Stearns County, uh, as you indicated to the observer, you would see two megawatts of solar. I do not believe we have any, we might have one of those built where both of the one-megawatts are built, but if this CUP is approved for Covert, I believe it would make this the fourth site in the county that has two one-megawatt solar firms.
And then I guess the other thing I was wondering about is, I, I get that there's not much land left to perhaps till at this point, but the lease is for the entire property, we've kind of talked about this before, you know, is there a way that we can get to the area that are being proposed? Because it seems like, I know the Planning Commission, it seemed like some members were even talking about this yesterday, sometimes the lease score is just not that helpful. I mean, I, I have to admit, I'm, I'm inclined to suggest we have a, a hearing, because it just, for me, it feels like there's so many questions, and that does even include the one plus one equaling two.
Especially if you look, the, the road looks like it can be shared to get there.
Right. And I get that if it was next door on another piece of land, you know, adjacent one wouldn't be considered that way.
It just seems ironic.
Yes.
That they're on the same parcel.
True.
And two different owners.
And it seems like we're starting to ask enough questions here that we're almost kind of doing a hearing without doing anything.
I would appreciate another hearing if, if that would be the pleasure of the board.
Well, board, you heard a property, you, you heard a, a person that's an investor property owner, whatever, in this, make an offer. Uh, what do you want to do?
I'll move that we bring this to a public hearing. And my guess is it won't take up a huge amount of time, but it could maybe help us with answering some questions.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just one, Mr. Chair, um, and that goes back to the issue that I brought up earlier, and that is, uh, we now would have so, two solar farms on this property, and the income, of course, is going to be taxed, uh, Randy, at the ag level yet? But yet I think the income is going to be much greater than it would be at the ag. And again, that's something that I think needs to be reviewed at the legislature, uh, because again, we're seeing more and more of this as far as the, the change in the land use, but not in the revenues generated, uh, on the tax basis. So we need to at least look at some type of change on that.
If we have, uh, if this, if this passes, is, is this an appropriate discussion for the public hearing? Uh, if we're, if we're going to have a public hearing, uh, can we take that up at that time, uh, instead of grinding this meat twice? Um, I'd call for a vote here, folks. District one?
Aye.
What is your wishes?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four, aye. Steve?
Aye.
All right, we're having a public hearing. Ooh. Uh, okay, what's that?
Mr. Chair, that is everything from Environmental Services unless you had something for us.
I'm afraid to bring anything up. Uh, let's see. Uh, no, I don't have anything else written down here. Thank you.
Then we're done. Thank you.
All right, Randy?
Thanks.
Well, at this point, around almost till six, we want to do the election update at the next meeting?
It's not going to change the outcome, so we could do it at the next meeting.
Okay. Just try to look at your time here.
Okay. What do you think, board members? Okay, we'll do it at the next meeting. Dave, sorry to make you work late, but, uh, you're there to be exploited. Uh, and, uh, let's see. Okay. Uh, anything else? Issues by commissioners? Uh, thanks for letting me do the tribute to Dennis Ritter. In addition, uh, we've been asked to, uh, vote for, uh, Minnesota County's Insurance Trust representative. Uh, there are three seats open. Two of the seats have one mem, uh, have one member applying to be on that, and one has two. Uh, the two applicants in this case, uh, for that second seat, one, uh, is the former AMC president from Roseau County. Uh, he, uh, so, you know, and I think his career was, uh, broadcast radio, um, and he, uh, he's of the opinion we should have a smaller county representative on the MCIT Board. The other one, Brenda, uh, is, uh, on the MICA Board, very familiar with him, he's from Blue Earth County, uh, and, uh, he also intellectually brings something to the table, and, uh, I don't know that you can necessarily go wrong. Um, if I had my brothers, uh, to take a pick simply because I, uh, I know my bro, Blue Earth County threw his MICA service the best, and they are a similar-sized county, uh, I would suggest him, but, uh, if there's strong opinion another way, the reason why I need a decision is I need to bail in, mail in the ballot tomorrow.
Who was the first one, Lee?
Okay, from Roseau County, what's his name? Uh, Mike? Uh, let me see, that's his. Okay. Yeah, Swanson. And, uh, yep, I'll dig this stuff out. But it, but, but, yeah, uh, Kip, Brenda from Blue Earth County and Jack Swanson from Roseau County. Roseau County, uh, Jack is the, uh, radio guy, uh, St. Cloud State grad, uh, and Kip is the Blue Earth guy. And Jack was AMC president, you know, a couple of years ago. Uh, so if you don't object, I'm going to, uh, put the X in the box next to Kip. Is there a problem with that?
Mr. Chair, if you're good at picking racehorses, I'll default to you.
Oh, that's scary. Okay, it's Kip unless you, uh, got a problem with it.
That sounds fine.
Thank you. Okay, and let's see, what's next then? Uh, da-da-da, da-da-da. Uh, oh, uh, the, uh, City of Campbell, uh, the, uh, new library opens on, uh, December seventh. Uh, I don't know if they're going to have a grand opening into the new year and stuff. Uh, I was out there on Friday night, and they're packing up the stuff in the old library and moving it into the, uh, new building. Uh, uh, the, uh, the Holly, the, the Holly Dazzle Parade, uh, they had was pretty neat. Okay, so I'm trying to find the route when I'm out there on Friday night for the parade, because obviously I'm out there to watch it. And I asked the first local person, and they said, well, it's the same route as the Fourth of July parade. Oh, okay. So I walked a little farther and asked another person, well, where, what, what's, what's the route of this parade tonight? And they said, well, it's the same route as the Fourth of July parade. Oh, okay. I walked a little farther and asked someone else, what's the route of the Holly Dazzle Parade? Well, it's the same as the Fourth of July parade. And I'll be damned if that parade wasn't the same route as the Fourth of July parade. Finally figured that out. But I just assumed, well, hell, he's, he's local, why, why is he so damn dumb? But, uh, hey, I'm not local, but it's a neat parade. It was fun. Uh, and that library opens soon, and, uh, that's, uh, about sixty percent grant money and about forty percent local money. It's a neat story. Um, the, uh, I don't have much else, uh, another item here, um, just the, uh, irony of how times change. Last year at this time, if a guy my age drank at home, I'd be a problem drinker. Now, if I drink at home, I'm part of the solution. Isn't it amazing how time just seems to take care of this stuff? Anyway, we can go do the six o'clock. I thought that was funny, but I guess you didn't. Anyway, one crisis at a time. Can we go to the, uh, truth and taxation hearing? Can we just go right into that? With no objection, why don't we go into the truth and taxation hearing? Do we have any particular special, uh, you know, do we have to say a benediction or something like that to get into this? If not, uh, let's, uh, start the presentation. Oh, I'm supposed to read something?
Okay.
Okay, here we go. We are holding this truth in budgeting hearing as required by the state, uh, state to allow the public to understand and participate in the county budget process. The meeting tonight is for informational purposes only, no decision will be made, and no action will be taken tonight to set the 2021 county budget or a county levy. We have the county administrator present for an overview of our proposed budget and levy for 2021. We will then hear from the county auditor treasurer about how this proposed levy impacts our local property taxes. Following the presentation, we will open the floor to receive testimony from the public. Members of the public who are not in attendance tonight can still participate by sending their comments to administration and the county board until December fifteenth, when the board is scheduled to set its final levy for 2021. To provide comments or feedback, email budget@co.sterns.mn.us or three-two-zero-six-five-six-three-six-zero-one. Stearns County Administration Center, County Administration Center, room one-twenty-one, seven-oh-five Courthouse Square, St. Cloud, Minnesota, five-six-three-zero-one. And with that, I think Dr. Willie can, uh, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Williams, county administrator, I assume you can hear, hear me, and Mr. Hammett, so you're going to get the slideshow up, please?
Yep.
We had, um, a hundred and sixty new cases of COVID-19 today, and in November, we had more cases than the previous eight months combined. We were nearly seventy-four-hundred cases. So we continue to meet like this, even for our annual TNT meeting. Um, but, uh- But, uh, TNT notice and in the agenda for tonight and in the two-page flyer we sent out about, about the budget, that all went out, of course, to everybody. We notified the public that anyone wanting to be heard could be heard by contacting us so they could be made a part of the meeting, just like we've done with all of our other public hearings. We did have a number of inquiries about the budget as a result of the flyer, and we answered all of those. We had a number of inquiries regarding, I think because of the TNT notice, and, uh, we did answer all of those, um, questions and, and, and comments. And, uh, incidentally, all of those were, were about, uh, property values, much like past years when we would have the, uh, have the, moving around here, when we would have the assessor's office in the foyer. Uh, it's really kinda how it went this year. People that contacted us were, were interested in talking about their value rather than the budget. And as Commissioner Lenzmeyer said, uh, we can take comments from the public all the way up until the board, uh, considers adopting the final budget on December 15th. I do know that we don't have anybody lined up to speak, um, at the hearing tonight unless someone came in very, very late, and I don't think they did. So, speaking of, uh, of, but I do wanna congratulate the board and the leadership team and all the staff, because throughout the, and if you can flip the slide, we continued to provide all of our services to the public. While our buildings were basically shuttered and our face-to-face contact with the public was severely reduced, um, most eliminated. And, but we still accomplished that. Um, and, um, the Budget Committee, Mr. Hammett and Mr. Uchin and, uh, Mr. Schreifels, we were able to pull this together with the leadership team and all the staff of the other involved, um, by doing everything remotely, and, and got us to this point. Um, so I'm thankful to everybody that helped this budget together. And, um, it appears that we'll be continuing to deal with the pandemic in the 2021. And we've been able to meet the challenge of the pandemic while still living out our values. And, as you can see, our values here are professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable. And we've, we, we keep those values and our mission, uh, in mind as we build our budgets. And we didn't do that any differently here. We kept those in mind with our 2021 budget, um, using the mission and values as our guide. And you might wonder, kinda, what does that mean to us? Well, if we talk about our initiatives, hopefully they all are, uh, are right in line with our, with our mission and values. And, and see, financially, we wanna, we, of course, wanna minimize expenditures and minimize the tax rate as much as possible. That also means balancing a budget, balancing the tax rate and the tax levy from year to year so that we don't have, um, spikes in the tax rate and the levy. We also need to be, especially this year, I think we need to be able to, uh, be nimble in the coming year and have the ability to react to potential reductions in, in state and federal aid. Although today, we did get a little better look, a little better report of the state's budget, but, uh, certainly there's still a depth looming there, and we need to be, uh, have the wherewithal and the financial wherewithal to react to potential cuts. Under infrastructure, um, of course, uh, we'll continue with our, with our transportation plan, but we will, uh, we'll be considering what we do with the, with the, uh, with the sales tax, because that will be expiring sometime soon and, 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 uh, we'll probably in the next year need to have that conversation. And of course, we have a couple of major projects going on, uh, with the changes to this building and, um, with our jail and justice system study underway now. And under, uh, technology, um, you haven't seen it yet, um, but you will very soon. We've, we do have the strategic plan, uh, pretty well completed. The leadership team is going to take a last look at, um, that, uh, at it tomorrow, and then I will get it on an agenda so the board can get a look at it and hopefully, uh, in one way, shape, or form, adopt that document. Um, and that has, um, uh, an abundance of technology initiatives within it. And so, uh, excuse me, and so they, uh, see that you're gonna see, uh, a very much, uh, technology-based plan there, much from, from where we've been in the last nine months. And, and again, uh, um, again, stress here, can, wanna continue to provide services under the peacetime emergency. Who knows how long we're gonna be really under these restrictions and, and be concerned about our health and safety. But we're certainly coming, we're, we're gonna be, need to be, uh, prepared to handle that. Then we do some of our, of, of the normal things that you see us working with our legislators. You'll see that coming to you soon. We're expanding training and development as much as we can under this budget. And, and, and our mental health, uh, efforts to improve mental health in the community are all things that we will continue to do. So, and much of what we do and much of, uh, what you saw there are initiatives that help us meet our mandates. And as you know, the county is an, is an arm of the state, and, um, much of what we do is, is mandated. So, we, we, at any rate, we will, we will continue to, of course, um, do those mandated programs as best we can. The state's part, I mean, we are part of the state's, uh, performance measurement program, and that is a program where we get, we can compare ourselves on a number of performance measures with other counties and cities, and we also get a little bit of money back for doing that. But we've, we take that, uh, mu- much further, and we've developed a whole number of, uh, performance met, performance measures that we work with as we work on the, um, yeah, on the annual budgets. And we focus on efficiency and effectiveness of our services, really, um, and keep, and, and those are all in line with our mission and values. I think, kind of, one of the most important things about our, our performance measures is it creates an opportunity for us to have some pretty meaningful discussions about what we do and why we do it, um, during budget time, when we're deciding what to fund and, and what not to fund. And, and in a very simple way, uh, what's important gets written down, and, and then, and then what gets written down tends to get done. We, we, we reviewed those performance measures, uh, in much more detail with the earlier budget process. So, let's look at the numbers a little bit on this budget. One thing that I wanna make sure that, um, I highlight is that what, what's being presented to you tonight is a little different than the budget that the board approved in September as the preliminary budget, because we, we found a way to reduce the levy a little bit anyway, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars. So, instead of, um, an increase in the tax levy of one and a half percent, we have that down to, uh, one-point-two percent. So, you can see here, the expenditures are a little bit less than they were, than what was recommended, um, back in, in September. So, if you wanna look at the total budget here again, it looks a little different. I can flip the slides, Steve, thanks. You can see that, um, I mean, it's very, very similar to what you saw in, in September, less of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in expenditures. And we'll talk a little bit about, uh, some of the major drivers there. But again, you can see the increase in the tax levies, just over a million dollars, which is one-point-two percent. You'll also see later, um, in this presentation that, um, that that one-point-two percent is considerably less than the real growth, um, in the tax base. So, pretty much all property owners, um, in the county will see a decrease in the tax, property taxes attributed to the county. Um, if it weren't for that, um, homestead exemption credit, it would clearly be, uh, all, but that works into the formula a little bit for some of the residential properties. So, if you look here, um, to the next slide, you can see that, um, all of the, the, the most significant increase in costs is, as it is every year, um, our, our employees. Of course, our, our, our personnel costs are a large expenditure of our total budget. But fortunately, we had a number of, uh, of, of other areas that were decreasing, or we could make decrease anyway, uh, for this coming year, and we had some nice increases in revenue as well. Uh, the kind of, one of the glaring reductions is revenue is, is highway state aid. And so, the, uh, Joe is actually gonna talk about, um, a reduction or the, the change in the plan at your next meeting as a result of some of the changes in the funding. At the next meeting, and, um, another notable item here is debt service. I think if we would've had a nor- a normal budget and weren't trying to reduce so much, we probably would've, wouldn't have decreased that quite so much, because we know we're gonna need to increase that a little bit in the future. Um, as, as I said earlier, we, we don't like to create spikes in there, but, uh, for this coming year, um, we, we reduce that as, as much as we possibly could. And then, uh, lastly on this slide, um, is just to note that we are using more of, of fund balance than we did in, uh, in our 2020 budget. So, we have that, um, up two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, so we're really using half a million dollars of fund balance, which is the project fund. And so now, now I, now we can talk a little bit about mandates, and as, as you know, um, much of what we do is, is mandates. Yeah, next slide, many times. And it doesn't look as skewed as it was used to, because some, I think back, if you go back twenty years ago, this slide would've had about a fifty-fifty mix. The not, the, the top line, which is the, which is local levy, and the bottom line, which is intergovernmental revenue, state and federal revenues, it would've been, they actually intersected, and that gap's been growing, um, for a number of years to the point now that you see it's, um, well over fifty percent of, in, uh, in local tax levy and down to even more than thirty-four percent, um, in, in governmental revenues. So, that gap continues, and that makes budgeting a little more difficult, uh, every year. We will, again, show that to our local legislators when we, if we meet with them. Nothing else, it'll be in the literature that we give them. And, uh, this is just a, kind of, an overview, and you can see that, uh, both expenditures and levy are mostly consumed, um, by the services and the general government, which, of course, includes, uh, public safety and, and a number of other services, but the largest is, is public safety. And I noted in, in my, uh, executive summary that if you pull out the road construction, it makes the budget look a little bit different, because of that loss of, um, state revenue. So, that's sort of the broad, brushed overview, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hammett so he can get you into a little more detail.
All right, thank you, um, um, and, Commissioner, my name is Steve Hammett. I'm the Assistant Administrator, and I'll be going over, as Mike indicated, some of the more granular details on, on the budget for 2021. Uh, first, I wanna take a look at the, uh, large blocks of, of spending as we look for next year. Uh, look where the increases and decreases are. As Mike, uh, indicated, the largest increase in our budget most every year is our personnel. It does make up about sixty percent of our budget. And so, the increase for personnel next year is just over three and a half, three-point-seven percent. Uh, but we make up for that, again, by reductions in services and supplies. Uh, services is down, um, in large part due to road construction and is indicated on, uh, Mike's slide on big changers. Not an election year, 2021, and we had, um, some reductions in departments where they had purchased large, uh, services or large quantities of, of supplies, like in the sheriff's office, for instance. So, our services budget will be going down six and a half percent. Our supply budget's going down seven percent. Capital outlay, which is our big-ticket items, uh, things that have a long lifespan, things that be, uh, that are very useful, and squad cars and plow trucks and those types of things. Holding that fairly steady, that's also where our technology budget is, and that's, uh, going up just over one and a quarter percent, uh, due to, again, the, the large investment in technology for, for next year, as we can see the trend that we've been trying to do for the past several years. Uh, overall, the budget is going down. Our expenditures will be going down point-eight-four. Again, that's, um, a little less than it was previously in September when we presented this. At that point, it was a reduction of point-six percent, and now it's a reduction of point-eight percent. Um, looking at capital improvement plans, like, um,
The month's, I tend to interrupt you quick.
Feel free, yes.
On that last slide, I think it, it just seems kinda ironic when you, when you go through it, you go, services are going down, personnel costs go up. It seems like, kind of, ironic. We provide service, but, you know, and I know you said it's highway and stuff, but it, it just seems ironic, like, oh, we're getting more personnel and doing less services, you know?
Well, and, and, and I get that, and the way to, to think about services is it's a lot of the contracts we have with outside vendors. So, it's not, you know, that work's not getting done. It's just that we're not, um, having as much work. You know, it's, it's, um, postage, it's, um, copy cost, it's travel and, and expense. It's, um, all of the outside vendors the county contracts with for rental leases, for equipment, for human services, in providing clients services directly, um, for, um, extension, uh, the educators for the extension office are in the services line items. And, and so, it's all of those costs that are going down. And yes, the biggest part that's going down for 21 is, is the highway construction piece, because we don't, some of the projects for 21 don't have as much funding from outside, and so it, it's changed that mix. But I, but I do understand where you're coming from, yes. You just look at the, in the numbers as it is, it looks, it looks weird, but when you dig in and understand it, then, then it makes sense.
Steve, the question on that slide, uh, is, in, under capital, did, did you say that our equipment is there as far as trucks and plows, uh, squad cars? Or is that's all under capital outlay, or is that's somewhere else?
No, no, capital outlay is anything that's over five thousand dollars that has a life expectancy of three years. So, that's all of our technology. It's all of our plow trucks, our squad cars, our pickups that we have for highway. It's large pieces of equipment for the LEC. It's, you know, boilers and, and mechanical pieces for all of our buildings, equipment for our towers. Um, so it's, it's all of those, um, pieces.
And, uh, And then my next question, though, have we haven't had to make any changes as far as shorting ourselves, as far as the rotation on any of that equipment, have we?
Uh, Commissioner Persky, I, that's what, I was just gonna jump in and say that this is, this number or this amount is pretty much, is pretty typical of an annual year, and we didn't make too many changes with the exception of, uh, I, IS investment in technology. Um, we did reduce that amount. We did, we've had that, that, that IS department so consumed with doing things this year that some projects we already had budgeted, we're behind on, so those will carry over. And so, we did create some savings in the capital outlay in that area, but pretty much the rest is on a, a normal.
Okay, 'cause I, I do know, if, if you start shorting your fleet, it catches up to you in years down the line.
We have always tried to keep fairly consistent, um, with the amount of squad cars and other pieces of equipment that we buy. You know, certainly, e- each year is unique, and sometimes, with department's request, we may not be able to squeeze all of it into the package for the next year. But, you know, with technology, we've been trying to increase that by about two-hundred thousand dollars a year for the past six, seven years since the last recession ended, uh, to get back to where we had been, you know, a decade or two ago. Um, again, the same thing with squad cars. We try to have them look out several years in a row to say that, you know, what's, what's the plan? How many squads will have to be replaced each year for the next several years so that we have a consistent plan so we don't short ourselves? So, we hope to take all of that into consideration. Does that answer your questions at this point? I'm gonna take the wave as a yes. All right, so, um, the next slide is looking at capital improvement projects. As you recall, um, this fall, uh, the board adopted the capital improvement project list, and, uh, those are the projects that, again, the auditor's office administration are working on, uh, coming up with the finance plan for, and we'll bring that back to the board in the first quarter. But just a reminder for yourselves and the members of the public that the capital projects that we're looking at doing in 2021, I'm gonna go from the bottom up, include the Law Enforcement Center master plan that, uh, is, and going on currently, and we hope to have that wrapped up, um, by May, um, with recommendations to the board in terms of what to do for infrastructure for the next thirty years, uh, related to the courts, the jail, and, and sheriff's administration. next 30 years related to the courts, the jail and sheriff's administration. Then we have right above that, the 750,000 ring road replacement. Again, a lot of the projects in our current plan deal with safety and security issues. And again, looking at the ring road and trying to come up with a little more green space and keep it safer for people to get access to the administration building, especially if they have disabilities, to put in a new ramp and help make that a safer place, especially as it's connected to, as you see above, the administration center remodel, again, which we are working on still with the architect to do some revisions to the plans to compensate for what a post COVID world might look like for operations for departments. And again, part of the most impacted the public will see is changes to the rotunda for how people get in and how security works again, as part of that safety and security initiative. That project's again estimated at three and a half million dollars over a couple of years. As part of the administration center, we also have a replacement of our boiler system, which again, I think is an original back to 1991. And if I recall correctly, the boilers we have are essentially ship boilers and they don't make anything this size anymore. And again, it's efficiencies have come into play that we can take advantage of in replacing our current infrastructure and have some long-term cost savings for our utility bills. We have a key card system upgrade. Our key card system is at the end of its expected life. The vendor is said that we have to move on to a different system and so we will have to upgrade that system in the next year. And then the last one I wanted to highlight is the Lake Bronis shower building. We co-own that part with Candy Oj County and our share of the project to replace that shower building will be a hundred thousand dollars. So those are the capital projects again that we're looking at taking under, taking under action next year. Technology, as I again mentioned, it was part of that capital number, that 3.7 million. Wanted to highlight a couple of the largest technology projects. Again, these numbers are aggressive. Some of these costs aren't going to all be spent or captured within 2021. Some of these will be multi-year projects. The first one there is the sheriff's dispatch and record system, which we're estimating again is about a two and a half million dollar system. This is the software system that runs the entire sheriff's department as well as the record system that we then tie into all the police departments across the county and ties in with the city of St. Cloud for dispatch. And so it's a very big undertaking and we are expecting to go up for RFPs. It may even been on today's agenda. I can't remember if it's on consent. But that'll be something that we get underway in the first quarter to start that process. And I see Commissioner Clark shaking her head, yes, so I was right. Next one is looking at a new HR payroll system. Again, our system has been in place for a long number of years and it's time to again examine the needs to go up for another more advanced system. And so again, the RFP I know is being worked on for that project as well. That looks to be a 1.1 million dollar project. And again, that'll probably be feathered out over the course of two years before it be totally complete. The phone system is estimated to be $800,000 to upgrade that system. Our system is currently is, is not a, I forget the term, it's not a over net, over internet protocol phone system. It's really old school. It's over 20 years old and again, it's something that needs to be replaced. And with COVID coming in, it's kind of give us time to pause and really rethink how we use the phone systems and what kinds of attributes or systems we need. And so I S is really looking at coming up some new technology about having a lot of soft phones, phones that tie into Microsoft team systems and come out over laptops as opposed to everyone having to have a, a hard phone on their desk. And so again, we're estimating $800,000 of cost to complete that upgrade of all the server computer systems. What I'm sure a lot of the public don't always think about is really the phone systems today are just, just computers. And so it's more of a, just a server and software replacement as opposed to most of the hard tech now appliances that have people have sitting on their desks. Two last ones on this slide are the attorney's case management system. Their system is at the end of its life. We've had it, I think, as long as Janelle's been in office and that system is needing to be replaced because it's again, not going to be supported much longer. And so that's about a half million. And then our tax and CAMA systems, the systems that run the property tax system and help calculate all of the taxes and how it's dispersed to all the entities across the county, that system will need to be replaced as well. We've been trying to get a system for several years. We do this in conjunction with lots of other counties as part of MCCC and Stern County, Sterns County's portion of that increase would be half a million dollars for that project. This slide is talks about the use of project fund, which is Mike indicated earlier, is the use of fund balance. And so this year again, it is increased. Last year we were only at 240,000. This year we're at half a million and that's all going to be tied to paying for the system upgrade. So we have about 300,000 already into the IT budget for this. And then the rest of the cost for that project, we're just going to pay for out of fund balance because it's in a one-time cost that it makes sense to do it that way as opposed to having that be on the levy. Well, this slide looks at the road construction program and all the various funding sources that make up the program for 2021. I won't go through all of them. I want to point out that this is a reduction again, last year's road construction program was about 20, 21 million dollars and this is at 18 and a half. And that is due in large part to the fact that there's no federal funds, the number of state funds are down and that's because of the projects that are in the project plan for next year. It's not due to lack of ambition or anything else. We have the ability to do lots of projects, but the ones that are on tap again, show up as a reduction. And this is the way it is, it looks and you can see that there's two and a quarter million dollars out of this funding source that is from county levy. And so we do have a lot of county road projects that'll be funded for that money as well. I think lastly for my portion of the event is looking at outside agencies. I just want to highlight that we have held outside agencies flat. A lot of our outside agencies did not ask for any increases, just as departments were very frugal in asking for increases as part of their budget. The outside agencies that we've worked with have been very frugal in asking for increases as well, everyone recognizing that this is a unique and strange time we're dealing with. And we were able to reduce the amount for outside agencies to like eight, $9,000 overall. The only real increase is in the child advocacy center based on the work that we really do with them, coordinating with law enforcement and human services, that made sense to increase that funding lines. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah for the, how do we compare?
Good evening, commissioners. Part of our presentation this evening talks a little bit about how Sterns County compares to other counties in the state and various metrics. And so this first comparison slide looks at how we compare per capita for our total expenditures as well as our intergovernmental revenues. And as a reminder, intergovernmental revenues are the state and federal amounts that we get as programmatic type things such as human services or stated dollars for highway and other grant dollars. So we rank low in both of those categories, both in total expenditures and in total governmental revenues per capita. Next slide takes a peek at where we are as our property tax rate and our property tax levy. So as Randy will cover in a little bit, our, our proposed property tax levy rate is 48.5 and that ranks us 79th in the state, 87 counties, which is another favorable statistic for us to show. The next slide looks a little bit at where our property tax levy increases. So we're proposing a levy increase of 1.22% from 2020 till next year. And that puts us below the average when you compare us in our MICA county group, when you compare us in our comparison county group and when you compare us to our neighboring counties. So when all those averages are over 2%, Sterns County is looking at a 1.22% levy increase. This last slide on comparison metrics looks a little bit about, looks a little bit at what the, that average looks like based on the size of the county. So the smaller counties are at the top and as you work your way down, Sterns County fits into that largest group with a levy size of over 60 million and with the population of over 100,000. And so our, our proposed levy increase of 1.22% falls right in line with the average of 1.17 for counties of that size. With that, I get to turn it over to Randy and he's going to talk a little bit about the property tax impact.
Thanks, Sarah. The first slide, we go over the county tax rate. Our tax rate went down 3.76%. Because of the growth in market value on the new base, we had the tax capacity increase of 5.35% and then with the levy at 1.22%, we see the tax rate go down. So levy, of course, is a very important number for us and we look at that a lot, but the tax rate is really what your constituents will feel. This is what the property, the citizens pay for property taxes directly related to property tax rates also a lot. I think it's a very important number to keep in mind. Okay, so for our new tax base, new construction, the top line of 186 million, that's a very healthy reconstruction amount. Last year we're at 191,000, 191 million, excuse me. So this is a very, very healthy amount. I know in the past, five years ago, they always had 125 million of an amount, but we keep surpassing those numbers. Utilities also increased by 33 million. We have four TIF districts being certified that added to our tax base. That's over 227 million in the tax base. Then the second line from the bottom, the county taxes from that new tax base is a 1.4, almost 1.5 million dollars. Our levy increase is just over a million dollars. So the new tax base is entirely paying for our levy increase. This is a change in tax base for various classification types. Non-homestead, as you see, has gone up a bunch. And this is really just movement between the classes. One of the indications here is we've done a lot of plating this year and so then more property has moved into the non-homestead area and some of that will continue to move throughout the year. One insignificant number is the apartments down below, about half of that number is market value increase and the other half is reconstruction in apartments. That's certainly a growth area that we're seeing. We'll go to the next slide. So this is the taxes by jurisdiction. Cities, city taxes on average went up to sort of 5%. Home shifts, 3.7%. The regional rail authority did go down, a little smaller number. And of course, you see the county went up 1.22 is what's being proposed. For the net tax for the entire county on the bottom is a 1.73%, which is a, which is a pretty low number to compare us to me. So this next slide has, this is again for only county taxes and it's assuming no increase in property values. The purpose of this slide is to show the decrease in tax as a result of the tax rate reduction. So the tax rates went down 3.76% and so that's what everybody's taxes go down. And that's important of that tax rate. That's something to keep in mind, the balance of levy with the tax rate is an important consideration. This isn't necessarily reflecting what people will see, it's just kind of showing defensive the tax rate. This next slide is showing what people will see on average. Again, this is county taxes only with the decrease in the tax rate, the levy at the 1.22% and the tax capacity increase of 5.35%. So we'll see as Mike kind of mentioned earlier, that most properties are going to see a decrease in property taxes on average. So if you have a valuation increase because it's a reconstruction or put on a division, then you're going to see some different numbers. But residential homestead, for instance, an average increased 3.24% in market value. And for the most part, they're going to see some reductions. Now homestead credit does come into play here and I'll explain that in the next slide a little bit, why those first floor are not in a reduction. A homestead has slight decrease and wants to be a bigger decrease in their taxes. Commercial industrial showing a just over 2% increase in market value and they're still seeing a reduction in average. Seasonal rec, a little bigger increase of 2.6% of still a reduction in the property capital, a very healthy positive value for this year. On the next slide, I'll explain a little bit why those lower value properties are seeing an increase. So there's three factors that come into play for residential homestead. One is the change in taxes due to the tax rate and that's we receive the reduction. And the market value of course causes your taxes to go up, but they also have in that column is a loss of the homestead exclusion. So that $76,000 in value, the homestead exclusion is almost $31,000. So it's a big reduction in their taxable market value, but as their property value goes up, they lose that homestead exclusion and that goes away once you get to $413,000. So that loss, that homestead exclusion causes their taxes to go up. And then I'll turn it back to Mike and I think he's going to do some concluding comments.
Yep, thanks, all three of you. I don't know, if you go to the next slide, I don't know why anybody would try to predict anything in the 2022, given where we are today, but we do try to budget, we don't do a two-year budget. We do try to think about what's ahead of us and, and as I said earlier, we, we'll be thinking about what we do with the quarter, quarter percent sales tax for highway construction in 2021. And we do, and as I said, we, we think about in the future years, I mean, we could take a million dollars out of fund balance and have no increase in this levy or we could reduce, as Commissioner Persky mentioned, we could reduce expenditures on our fleet and capital things and do things like that. But we would then have to claw our way back out of that in future years. And so that's why you see us with the budget that we have here today. And again, as I said earlier, we need to be, we need to be nimble, I think particularly in 2021, ready for change because there can be some significant change. I also suggested that, you know, that we may not have reduced our debt service quite as much in 2002, for the 2021 budget, had we not been in the circumstances we are. We halted adding people to the sheriff's department as a result of the ICMA study and we'll need to pick that up sometime hopefully in 2022. And then another, this is really a good thing, all the good work that they've done in human services to increase, increase revenues, but you know, those revenues aren't going to continue to increase, they'll continue to stay at that at, at the current levels, but, but not dramatic increases. So those are some of the things we're thinking about, you know, big things we're thinking about as we prepared this budget. And where we are in the process, of course, as you all know, we're at the end of the process with adoption are coming in a couple of weeks on your, at your regular meeting on December 15th. Just as a couple of last reminders about this budget is we're recommending a budget that's a little bit lower than our expenditures and a levy that are a little bit lower than what we, where we were at in September. And so we have an increase of 1.2% in, in the levy and that as, as was explained to you, is a reduction in total expenditures, a little bit of an increase in the levy. But we have a nice increase, as Randy said, in the, in the total tax capacity of 5.3% and a real, real growth of 1.85%, which results in pretty significant decrease in the tax rate. And that's a, what the fourth year in a row, I think that we reduced the tax rate and this year, as we said, it'll, it's the real growth is more than the increase in, in the actual levy. And so with that, I think that concludes our presentation. And if there's any questions from board members, we're happy to try to answer them. And as I said at the beginning, there is And as I said at the beginning, there is, there, there was no one signed up, uh, to speak to the board about the budget, um, at this hearing. But, uh, as we, uh, as we also said in the beginning, uh, we will continue to take, take comments from the public um, in a number of ways if they want to come make comments.
Any questions from board members? Any comments by board members?
Questions? First of all, I heard a potential proposal by the legislature to forego sales tax for three months next year. That was suggested. Would that include removing our quarter percent from, uh, transportation? Do you know, have you heard that?
I, I, I have not heard that. I don't think I can answer that. And I don't know if, uh, if Jody has, Jody has any knowledge about that either. Was it, I, I don't know if they were talking about foregoing or was it just, uh, a delay?
You know, no, they, they talked about not, 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 not using sales tax for three months at the beginning of the year. So that, that was just a question. And then also looking forward as far as county aid, uh, I mean, is that going to be one way for them to cut the state budget, to balance the state budget? I mean, does that mean we'll have to tighten our purse strings then as well or dip in the reserves or what? Any, any way to look in the crystal is that, at that issue?
But Commissioner Rusk, I think that's a concern, absolutely is a concern. And there's, there's a, um, a lot of other ways that revenues to the county could be cut other, other than, than CPA as well. I mean, we get a, a whole host of different revenues in our human services area that it can be reduced by, you know, changing formulas and all kinds of different things. So I think there's a lot that we need to be, uh, on top of as the legislative session begins.
Okay. Well, well, Mike, I, I appreciate you, yeah, I mean, it's difficult. I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sorry to look into the crystal. And then, of course, the bigger picture is what about the relief, COVID relief? Are, I mean, we were blessed to have what we did already, um, as far as the federal government working on, uh, uh, COVID relief this next, uh, uh, I want to say session or, uh, phase of it. Are, are, are we going to be very dependent on that or are we in reasonably good shape?
Well, that's a good question, Commissioner. I think as you, as you all know, Congress is talking about it. And, uh, and our state legislator is talking about, um, a package as well. And actually, if we would have had time, I would have brought this up under issues by commissioners. We as a internally, um, as a, some of our businesses were shut down again. We, we really wanted to try to continue to use our CARES dollars and get out, get them out to some of those businesses. A second round, if you will, of help to those businesses. But we just couldn't figure out a way to do that as quickly as we would have needed to do because all that money had to be done spent by yesterday. And we just couldn't figure out a way to do it fair and equitably and quickly. And if you remember, we, we, we partnered with our, with, with the cities as well, which kind of made it a little more cumbersome to do some, something quickly. So anyway, we didn't end up doing that and it's, and, and, but we do have money left over in that CARES that, that we retained. Uh, that if we would need to do something, uh, we could do that. Hopefully Congress or our legislator will come through with some kind of a package. AMC has been in communication with, at least with the county administrators about, um, I think finance folks too about, um, seeking advice on how the state might do that. And we've been responding to all of that, you know, whether or not the state does nothing on its own or the counties are involved again. It's a little bit up in the air, but it sounds to me like there's serious talk of at least coming up with a, with some relief for those businesses.
And to answer your commish, uh, your question as well, Commissioner, um, Sterns County did use a lot of our CARES dollars to, um, to reimburse ourselves for payroll costs of this pandemic. And as you'll know, those payroll costs were already levied and budgeted as part of our annual budget for 2020. So as far as upcoming costs of the pandemic response and things that may be needed as far as quarantine and contact tracing and various, uh, response things, we are hopeful that some of the CARES money we retained for our payroll costs will be able to be used for those costs that may come up in the next few months while we're still under the fire of the pandemic.
Any other questions? I don't know if you can hear me, but, uh,
We can hear you.
Okay, that's too bad. The, uh, uh, if there are any other questions, uh, we can conclude this, uh, truth in tax, you know, truth in taxation or truth in budgeting hearing. And, uh, we survived another year. Who would have thunk, huh?
So we just need to make sure people understand when we're going to set the levy and that's going to be at our next board meeting on December 15th.
Well, you heard it. Next meeting, December 15th and, uh, we'll adopt the levy, uh, unless, uh, something significant happens between now and then. And, uh, this year of 2020, I won't rule out anything. That's where things will land. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Somebody had something?
Nope, I just said thank you.
Oh, okay.
That was a lot of work to do. Very much appreciate it.
Yeah, uh, but I, in, in my opinion, in 2021, the things should be a lot smoother, uh, because of, uh, brilliant board leadership. Can we adjourn? This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you staff for all the work on the presentation.